That's just gonna be muted then, again, muted them again. To talk and we can promote them to panelists so they you can see them if you'd like.
Okay, that would be good. Okay.
You are now live.
Okay, so we're we're rolling?
Yes, you're rolling.
Okay, great. All right, good evening. Welcome to the technological regularly scheduled meeting of the Plating, Moro Bay Planning Commission. This is May 5th, 2020, and we're around 6:00 PM. We have a full complement tonight, so we have a quorum. So I'll call the meeting to order. Do we have? Does anybody on the commission have announcements they'd like to make?
I've got one, Jerry. I believe the Moro Bay National Estuary is having a webcast on Thursday at 4 o'clock. You can see the link on their website. It's about the health of the bay, and so that should be very interesting for our community.
Okay, any anybody else have anything they'd like to add? I'd just like to say I caught just a glimpse of Christina Johnson's talk on KCBS about the aquarium. And I think there's, you know, they're in some dire straits. So as far as with all the the schools being out and stuff, so you know, if there's anything that anybody can do to help them, that would that would be appreciated. So, okay, so we have before public comment here. Like I'd like to say that if a member of the public would like to speak on the agenda items from public comment. If you're on the meeting, please raise your hand on Zoom, or if you're dialing in, please press nine. The co-hosts will be able to see how many attendees have their hands raised for public comment and allow them to speak one at a time. When you go to speak, you'll need to unmute your microphone. And so hope this works for people.
Yes, we have two in the queue.
They're for the items that are on the agenda.
Okay, so next item we have coming up is the consent calendar. We have the current advanced planning processing list. The staff recommendation is to receive and file. Does anybody have any comments or questions on this? Okay, seeing none. Okay, there you are, Jesse. You just popped back up on my screen. Do we have a do we have a motion?
I'll move that we accept the consent calendar consent agenda.
A second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor, say say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passed unanimously. Okay, at this point, we're moving on to public hearings. We have one item tonight. That's item number B1. And this is case number UPO dash 284. The site location is 1001 Front Street. And it's a review of a conditional use permit that was approved by the Planning Commission on May 16. Do we have any expertise communications? Anybody would like to say? Okay, Michael?
Yeah, I met with Mr. Gueremore in Muznovak back in March, I think, at this point. And walked the site and discussed some of their concerns.
Okay, Susan?
And likewise.
I did the same. I think Joe and I were on the same visit.
And Jesse?
I did the same thing. I'm not sure what day I can I can pull that up if we need to.
Okay, and I I also met with them onsite, marked the site with them. So I think we all got firsthand firsthand knowledge of this. Okay, so at this point, I'll turn it over to the staff for their their presentation.
Thank you, Chairperson Moore, and good evening, members of the commission. This is my first time doing this. So I will attempt to share my screen right now to start the presentation.
Hey, Cindy, I'm sorry. We were supposed to, I was, for some reason, I missed a public public comment on items not on the agenda. Was was there anybody in the in the queue for that?
Yes, we have two people. Nobody's got their hand raised.
Okay, so those two people are.
It's Kathy and Gio. It's Kathy and Gio for the item.
Okay, okay, that's okay. I'm sorry, Cindy. So let's so we'll open public comment and then close it. And we'll get on to item B1 at this point.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's fine. Here we go. So yes, this is 1001 Front Street. This is a public hearing request for a CUP minor modification, case file MIN 20-003. It is a minor modification or amendment, I mean, same, to the precise plan, conditional use permit, UPO dash 284, which was approved by Planning Commission on May 16, 2012. The project was also reviewed as a business item by the Planning Commission on February 18 of this year. The applicant is proposing, in response to that meeting, the applicant is proposing minor modifications to public access improvements and establishment of a master sign program. The project location is shown there on your screen at the corners of Embarcadero, Front and Beach Street. Project zoning, the zoning, the property is located in the waterfront zoning district in a planned development in S4 overlay zone. The project is also located in the coastal commission's original jurisdiction. As stated, the conditional use permit was reviewed by Planning Commission as a discussion item on February 18 after the PC requested it be brought forward over concerns regarding public access and compliance with the conditions of approval on the 2012 planning permit. The discussion topics at the February meeting included the lateral access pathway, the Beach Street gate, and the public access near the south parking lot by the Fish Market's walk-up order window. Here is the excuse me, skip the slide. Just to recap, here is a slide that you all saw at the February meeting. This is for informational purposes, really, but it shows an aerial images aerial image of all of the approved uses on site. And on this image, you see in yellow the coastal access pathway, also known as the Harbor Lot. Here's the approved 2012 CUP precise plan. The areas shaded in gray are the required public access. And here is the applicant's proposed CUP minor mod plan. This also shows the public access area shaded in gray. The on the left side of the screen is the north side of the lot, which is where the Beach Street gate is located. And on the right side of the screen is where the Fish Market walk-up window is. The modifications discussed in the staff report cover five distinct discussion points. The lateral access at the Fish Market, placement of coastal access signage, the parking lot, the Beach Street gate, as well as the master sign program approval. And I'll discuss this in the next discuss these issue points in the next slides. First, to address concerns regarding access being blocked at the south end near the public, excuse me, near the walk-up window, the applicant is proposing to create more room by shifting parking stalls to the east in order to separate the food service line from the coastal access walkway. This includes placing bollards for clear delineation and extending the customer line south. No parking spaces are proposed to be lost with this plan. And here, in this image, you see the plan. It circled in red is the area I just described with the relocated order line to the east and the shaded Harbor Walk access way to the right, or sorry, to the west. Here is a recent photo of what this looks like currently. And I'm going to try to use my little laser pointer here, so there with me for a second here while I pause. Okay, so in this area, you see the end of the baller area as it currently is, and it extends to about the first parking stall with a small sign delineating order line versus coastal access. And then this area is is the proposed location of a new 18 inch by 24 inch coastal access sign. Secondly, coastal access signs. So to ensure visibility of signs, the applicant is proposing seven areas where sign locations are proposed to be adjusted and also add two new coastal access signs. The first two on this list are signs that I just showed you in the previous slide. Number one, the order line sign language would be modified to emphasize coastal access. A new sign would be placed at the railing along the bayside just south of the Fish Market building. And number three, the coastal access sign that's on the southwest corner of the Fish Market building would be relocated to the patio windscreen. And four, coastal access sign that is currently on the north, on the wharf, the public view deck, and it's the slide says north, but it's actually on the south side of that public view deck, would be relocated to the pump shed on the north side for better visibility. Here is with a copy of what those signs one and two would look like, the Fish Market walk-up sign on the right and the new railing sign on the left. And this is our standard coastal access sign, excuse me here. Our standard coastal access sign that we see in other parts of the waterfront that brands this as the Moro Bay Harbor Walk. In this picture, really, the pictures are basically both sides of the same image on the image on the left. This is image number three, where this coastal access sign would be relocated to the corner of this window frame. And then this picture here would be relocated there. In this image, it shows the public view deck. The existing waterfront sign that is identifying the public view deck would be moved from the south side of the wharf over here to the pump shed, a higher location for better visibility. And then the last three sign locations would be in the area of the Beach Street gate, number five, the applicant is proposing to relocate the existing coastal access sign to the opposite fence for better visibility. Proposes placing a new 18 by 24 inch coastal access sign on the gate, visible when the gate is open. And then number seven, retaining the existing sign that identifies our temporary Harbor Walk closure during periods of commercial unloading. Here are some pictures of what that looks like. On the left, you see this is the existing coastal access sign that would replace the sign here. And then the applicant's plans show placing a new 18 by 24 inch Moro Bay, excuse me, Moro Bay Harbor Walk sign in that area. Third issue point, parking. The applicant proposes to revise the site plan to re-strike the four existing parking spaces in the north lot with 30-degree layout. This would minimize vehicle approachment into the walkway. As a result of this, no parking spaces are proposed to be removed. The applicant is proposing an addition of asphalt to the to the transition area between the parking lot and the wharf, as you can see in this picture here on the screen. That would allow to improve for accessibility. And the car that you see just off the edge of this picture would be shifted to the east to allow that accessibility. Here's the existing parking lot with that public access walkway shown in the yellow striking. Issue point number four, the applicant is requesting to retain the gate at the Beach Street entrance for security and liability reasons of the commercial fishing business. As noted in the staff report, the applicant is requesting a six-month review of the by the Planning Commission with a log of gate closures demonstrating compliance. The 2012 CUP did not include a condition on the gate specifically. It was the 2018 CUP amendment for the Burgess Kiosk, which included a condition to open the gate by 7:30 every morning. If the Planning Commission accepts the applicant's proposal, planning condition two would require a record of gate closures to use in the six-month review follow-up. Point number five, signage. The CUP minor modification request includes establishment of a master sign program to encompass all business signage on site. The plans submitted include pictures of all existing signs. No new business signs are proposed. The total signage, including menu boards, is 236 square feet, where 123 square feet is allowed. And just as a point of clarification, the staff report said 120. It's supposed to be 123, as shown on this slide. The city sign ordinance does allow for sign ordinances to be exceeded, sign allowances to be exceeded with approval by Planning Commission. Although it does exceed the base sign allowance, this master sign program approval would memorialize signs on site which do not appear to be excessive for the property due to the number of businesses for which it serves, as noted on the slide, and the multiple street frontages and pedestrian access. On this image here, you see the existing business signs on site. Planning condition number one would be is recommended to require sign restoration of the Chu Codfather sign. And these are older signs. You see them on the top of the slide there. In conclusion, the proposed amendments are minor in nature and intended to more fully comply with the project's original conditions and also intended to address the comments given by Planning Commission during the February meeting. The proposed modification is consistent with the CUP and coastal development permit. Staff therefore recommends conditional approval of the project by adopting PC resolution 10-20 for the CUP minor modification, MIN 20-003, to the CUP precise plan, UPO dash 284. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thanks, Cindy. Do we have any questions for for staff? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody raise their hands, so I guess we'll go to this point, we'll have the applicant if they would like to make a presentation.
I'm moving Kathy to panelist, and I'm gonna do the same with Gio. And I'm bringing Jesse back.
Do we really need him?
We lost him. All right, we should be getting folks on now. So both Kathy and and Gio, you guys are up. So I don't know which one of you guys is gonna talk or whatever, but you need to unmute if you're gonna whoever's gonna go first.
Okay, I'm not seeing anybody come.
There we go. Okay, I think I got it now. I had to get the screen come up. All right.
Okay. Hi Kathy, welcome to the, welcome to the club.
Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate it. You have all this technology stuff right now. It's like, oh, it's crazy. But I appreciate the Planning Commission, the extra efforts to do this kind of stuff. Just for the record, my name is Kathy Novak, and I'm here representing Giovanni De Gueremore for this project tonight. Before I begin, I'd like to thank staff for meeting us with after the last commission meeting so that we could discuss the options and also formulate a plan with modifications that were supported by them. I would also like to thank the commissioners for meeting us onsite so we could show show you and discuss the proposed plans. We really felt this was a much better way so that we could give you a comprehensive understanding of the site and the constraints, as well as an ability to point out the proposed modifications. Staff has provided a written, an in-depth written and oral presentation tonight, and this coupled with our previous site business really addresses all the points we had previously discussed at the last Plating Commission meeting. So therefore, I really don't have any additional comments tonight. I think it'd be better served for me just to answer any questions you might have. Gio wasn't planning on talking, but he is here in case you have any questions for him. So in conclusion, I'd just like to say that Giovanni would certainly like to put all these issues in the rearview rearview mirror and also move forward so he can continue with his business while at the same time make sure that he can offer public access in a safe manner. So again, we'd like to thank everybody for meeting with us and the staff support on this, and we hope you are able to support this presented tonight.
Okay, thanks, Kathy. Let me check and see if we have anybody else that would like to speak on public comment to this item. Scott, do we have anybody in the queue?
No, there's nobody in there.
Okay, okay, Dave. We'll bring it back. Kathy, you may want to come back on. Do we have any questions for Kathy? Michael?
Kathy, I just wanted, if you could state for the record, you know, what is the what's the position about the gate being retained? Can you can you talk a little bit more in depth about why the operation feels you need the the north gate on the project?
It's very important for security purposes. I think that in your staff report, we really did go through and address those points. You know, at nighttime, we've got the fuel dock down there. Giovanni's had some problems in the past that if the gate is left open at nighttime, people will have illegally placed oil products and et cetera right there by the fuel dock station. And then Giovanni is responsible for disposing of these things. We have issues with people coming in and ransacking and trying to start his equipment. There was, he's got videos of a certain person trying to start one of the forklifts down there. There's no railings on the wharf down there. So at nighttime, when it's dark, because it's not well lit, then people could have issues with falling off the wharf, which would be the last thing we would want everybody to anybody to do. So it's a lot of security issues. And I think really Giovanni is trying to do his best here at opening the gate at 7:30 in the morning. We said once before that commission meeting that he got the time wrong, and he apologizes for that. But he's committed to opening at 7:30, closing it at dusk, and just for public safety and then his protection for the fuel dock, the fuel supply down there, so if somebody doesn't get in there and start monkeying around with any of the equipment on the fuel dock and causing any environmental issues.
No follow-up to that. One of the citizens that communicated with the Planning Commission, I'm not sure how people see those. I think the message from Mr. Greens on the on the city website, that we got some other correspondence from Ms. Winholz as well. But one of the things that was brought up was the idea of if the gate was retained, taking down the wooden pickets that are in it and making it more transparent through the chain link. Is that something that you thought about before?
I don't know if we really thought about it. I when I saw that comment this afternoon come through, I did go on to Google Earth and I looked. And when the gate is open during the daytime, when it swings out with the wood pickets in the fence, it's really not blocking anything because it swings out toward the bay. So if anything, it's hiding some of the the double check valve and the fuel dock building down there. And the other side gate really is just, it's really not much of an issue. It's just, you can't see the there's like a carport shed where Giovanni pushes equipment and that kind of stuff and is protecting that. But it's really nice to have the, I think, in some respects, to have that wood on there, especially when the gate is open. Because when he puts the coastal access sign on the gate, indicate that there's coastal access going through there. Having something behind that coastal access sign is going to make the sign more prominent and a little easier to read. If you don't have those wood pickets in there, then that sign is kind of kind of blending with the background, and people are not going to see it as well.
Okay, let me let me jump in on this, Michael, too. I had, this was one of my issues, too. Kathy, have you thought about swinging it from the other post? So that it comes back up against stack instead of instead of swinging out, and it does block some of the bay view that way. So basically reversing the swing on it.
Well, I think that's a problem. So that's a there's a double gate down there. So the one gate that's open right now that swings toward the bay, and then there's another gate adjacent to it, and there's a small section of the fence. So the problem is going to be if you try to swing the gate the other direction, that you've got some equipment and things right behind that second gate, which would be the east gate, if we want to call it that. So swinging, you're taking away the ability to have a double gate if you only have it swing one way. Does that kind of sense?
Yeah, yeah. But what about maybe turning that, you know, turning that gate into a into a rolling gate that, or you know, the the other option? Because it, as you are, as you're coming down Bay Street, you do block, you know, you do block some of the bay view. That's the end of the bay, of Beach Beach Street there, so.
Well, I'm gonna, I actually went through Google Earth this afternoon to look at that variation, and it really doesn't do much of a view block because you've got the fuel dock building behind the gate, and there's a double check valve, and there's some things. So there's really only a little tiny portion of it you could say would be blocking the view. And then putting a slider, there's not enough room because again, it's double gate. So you can't really slide it across the stacks building because when you pull it towards stacks, then you'd be rolling a gate in front of the windows or its stacks because there's just not enough room for the double gate, the width of that gate to make it into a rolling gate.
Okay, well, does anybody else wish to, does anybody else wish to speak to this item specifically? Okay, Joseph?
I'm just gonna give my opinion on the issue of the gate, if that's what you're asking for. I I can appreciate that this is an attractive nuisance which creates problems for for the applicant. And you know, I'm I'd like to give him the benefit of the doubt and maintain the gate and and see.
Joseph, let me interject here a little bit and just say this is still for questions.
All right, no.
We're gonna have a discussion on this.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's fine. Michael, I interrupted you. Is there anything else you'd like to ask Kathy?
No, that that's the main questions I had at this time.
Okay, then Joseph, do you have any questions for Kathy?
No.
Susan?
No.
Okay, and Jesse's dropped out of my queue. So is he still on?
He's there.
Okay, okay, I don't I don't see him. So Jesse, did you have anything to say ask Kathy about?
I did, I did, actually. I know, well, let me phrase this in the form of a question like Alex Trebek. Would Mr. De Gueremore be opposed to a chain with signage hanging from it that that is more of a a psychological barrier than a physical one?
That's not going to do any protection for security at nighttime because the idea here is trying to prevent the public from accessing behind that building and having access to the fuel dock property and the wharf and all the equipment at nighttime. During the daytime, the gates open so that people can go through there so that we can maintain that public access. And then the chain idea would only be up or the gate would be closed when the commercial fishing activities are going on like it's a part of the permit. But a chain won't help at nighttime.
Okay. Okay, um, do we have, do you have any questions for the applicant on the pathway? Does anybody have any questions for her on that? The lateral access through the property? Okay, I have a question on that for you, Kathy, on, you know, on that, you know, through the property. There was a, on the original plan that was laid out and was approved by Coastal Commission, the tanks were set, you know, on the wharf or further away so that there was there was more of a straight line access through the property. The way the way you're proposing, you have a jog that goes around the two tanks. Why were those tanks put there instead of putting them where you had originally planned for the, for what you, what you put into application for the Coastal Commission?
So where the tanks are right now, where the, if you're looking at your site plan and you're looking, you see this shaded gray area that's indicating where the public view deck is, there's a, there's a 12 inch elevation change between the wharf, which would be to the left, which is in the white, and then to the right, the gray for the public view deck area. Giovanni had people, had problems, even though he had like a stripe on there indicating that there was hazard coming up, people were tripping off of that area, and then he actually had forklifts drive over that section. So he turned the tanks around so that he could block that portion of the wharf so people wouldn't trip or fall off that 12 inch elevation change. So what he's trying to do here is trying to accommodate and leaving the tanks, the tanks are hard plumbed in right now for, because they're, they need to have recirculated water. But what he's trying to do here, because he realizes that there is this transition, and the only way that you could level off, completely level off the transition would be to tear out the whole entire wharf and then redo the elevation. So what he's thinking here is that if he can come in, in that transition area and then add some asphalt so that he can slope that transition area down around the tanks, then that gives a, a little bit better transition for people coming down the coastal access way than sloping down onto the, the rest of the asphalt and onto the public view deck. It really is not going to help to pull those tanks or that, at least that one tank back and, and make it on the wharf, because again, we have that elevation change there. And the way that if, when you were onsite and we were looking at it, we all felt, I think that that was the best thing to do is add the asphalt in there and just leave the tank for protection for that drop off.
Okay, that, that section, as we talked about on that, that section of the parking lot, it is, it is on fill, so that could, you could have some of that elevation ground away and reset, and then a little bit longer ramp and a straight shot run through there's, and still have, still have protection for the drop off there rather than jog around it. I know, I know it'd be, it's, it's, you know, would require more work, but it's not infeasible to do. It just seems like we're working around something that wasn't on the plan, that was put there ad hoc and wasn't approved to begin with, and then now we're jogging, jogging around that. So that'll be, that'll be something that, that, that we'll need to discuss a little bit more, so.
If I add on to that, so, so for clarification points, so the elevation change is already there, and even if the tanks were removed, you still have that elevation change there. So it doesn't really change the, from where it was in the original permit with the tanks running the other direction. So what we're trying to do is try to make this safer. If we start trying to add ramps in, then we're slowly going down this path of how far do we go? Because once we could, we start doing some things, we start triggering some other ADA requirements, and then pretty soon we're looking at, well, then this is not ADA accessible, that's not ADA accessible, and then we, we run down this path that we could be doing a lot of major changes. If we had to put a ramp in, the problem that I see with the ramp is if you did an ADA ramp with a 12 inch elevation change, you're talking about a 12 foot ramp, and then we have to have a five foot by five foot clear at the top and the bottom, so then we're talking 22 feet. So if you go from the end of the harbor walk where you meet, where it starts to jog and listen, the tank wasn't there and you started the ramp at that point in time, then you're bringing in, you've got almost 22 feet, you're coming into the public view deck area, and you're going to have railings on that ramp because you'll have to meet those standards. So pretty soon, then you've taken up almost half of the view deck area with a ramp going into with rails where people are going to have to start walking around the ramp to either get to the harbor walk or from the other direction if there's like people from verges that are coming down for their sport fishing, they're going to have to be walking around the ramp through the, to get to the gangway. So it's gonna, the ramp is kind of problematic of putting it in the middle of the, the view deck area there. So this is why we thought that this is the best way to go is a solution to this problem that we're looking at so that we don't have people falling off the elevation or trying to provide at least a little bit of a smooth transition for them.
Okay. Somebody else have any questions about the, the pathway? Okay, Joseph?
I, I had one caution from our, from our, our last meeting about this. I recall that the property is a combination of leasehold and private property. So the area of the, of the storage shed and the, and the equipment, is, is that a private property or leasehold property? Do you know Kathy?
Part of it is on the leasehold and part of it is on the private property.
Okay, all right. That's, that's what I wanted to know.
Okay, the next, next item I think we, we need to discuss, not discuss, but have questions on is the, is the south access. And does anybody have any questions for the applicant on, as for the south access? This is the, the parking lot, the, the public parking lot, private access transition where the order window is? Okay, let me go with Jesse first.
Well, I mean, I, I know, I'm trying to not phrase this in a disrespectful way, so let me try and, with all due respect, we've, we've all been kind of seeing pictures of folks during this, during this crisis time that shouldn't be there, number one, number two, aren't socially distancing, aren't wearing masks, things like that. That's not the point of this. But if, if you've seen the pictures recently on, on social media of what's occurring in that parking lot, I think we're creating another different problem because they were actually angling out of the weight window actually towards the driveway and behind vehicles, and, and it was just, it was a different, a different problem. Do you foresee that being a problem?
No, I think so. So what we're going to do in this walk-up window is we're going to go in front of the vehicle, so between the vehicles and the harbor walk so that we can, people are visible. My concern is if we try to angle the takeout line to go back toward the t-shirt shop, for example, then you're going to have people queuing in the parking lot, there's going to be vehicles backing up and, and there's kids running around and a car is backing up out of one of the parking spaces, they don't see the kids, it's going to be a disaster. So what we want to do is move these bollards over to get them off of the actual harbor walk and onto the asphalt area and, and delineate a line there that goes in front of the vehicles. Now, we found out that afterwards that the parking lot spaces are actually deeper than we thought, so all we have to do is move the wheel stops back, and we don't have to restripe because there are, the stripes are already long enough, and we'll just put wheel stops so people can't encroach into the, the takeout window line, and then there would be the existing harbor walk or sidewalk area for people to walk past to have access to the harbor walk.
I, I didn't want to interrupt you, but that wasn't, I, I miss, you misunderstood my question or I misstated it. What I meant to say was, based on the pictures I've seen, there's been some attempts at trying to queue the line currently, but the pictures I, the, 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 the images I've seen on social media recently, in the last couple days, weeks, or very recently, are of basically a giant number of, of folks just kind of mulling around in the parking lot towards the driveway, in the actual drive, the vehicular approach in the driveway. Do you, I, I don't, I don't know where I'm going with this question other than to say, I think we're fixing one problem but creating a bigger one.
So I have photos that Giovanni sent me, and then also Sean Green, I know had sent me one, and Giovanni put red tape on the pavement down here so that he could create this queuing line and then have the safest distancing. I don't, really can't answer the questions on people standing in the parking lot and doing things if, if the public is gonna, you know, I don't, I still don't know how to answer to control the public. We're figuring, and this is the safest way to control the public out of the parking lot is to put this queuing line in front of the vehicles.
Okay, Michael, you had a question?
Yeah, I, I noticed in the, in the plan, there's definitive striping called out from the north gate all the way down to where you get into the public view deck area, but there's nothing in this southern access point to indicate with striping or things like that. Is that, is that something that you took a look at and dismissed, or is there, could that be something to consider?
Actually, what we're going to do, so where on the site plans where you says relocated order line, we're going to put a couple of those, those bollards that you see down there now. We're going to put a couple of bollards on, down this and make a line and put the chain in between the bollards so that we actually create a queuing line. And if we need striping on the pavement as well, I mean, that certainly we can entertain that, but we thought with the, the bollards and chains going in between the bollards, then there's an obvious line that the people need to get into, and that's what we were hoping to do. Does that answer your question?
Okay. Any other questions on the, the south access for the applicant? Okay, then, so we've gone through, we've talked about the gate, we've talked about the pathway, we've talked about the south access. Do we have any questions for the applicant on their, on the signage program? Okay, I'm not really seeing any questions on that. So did you have anything else you wanted to say at this point Kathy?
I can't really think of anything. I think Giovanni's trying to be helpful and trying to work with you guys the best that he can for, you know, and keeping the public safe as well. So we certainly appreciate all your efforts and, and understanding of, and coming down the, you know, talking to us on the site so that we could really point out what was going on. I think that was really helpful. So thank you.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. We'll close the public comment and bring it back to the commission again, and if we, if we need to, we'll open it back up again. So, so we can get your, the applicant's response. Okay, who wants to go first on this one? Jesse?
Reluctantly, it seems like nobody wanted to go first.
I was deferring, so.
I'll start this off. So I, I have some strong feelings about, about the fence. I really didn't, I really don't think the gate on the north end belongs there. I, I believe that there's still access to this area, you know, the south entrance, and I just, I, I think the, the negative outweighs the positive on it. That's my personal opinion, that I think the gate should go. We should have some sort of, of a chain and some cones or something, non-permanent, maybe a psychological barrier to keep people from, from, from wandering in there, that's necessary during operations. But I, I mean, I think the coastal access issue is too, too significant to, to leave it there. That's just my opinion. The, the south, the south entrance where the, the queuing line is for the ordering window, and, and Mr. DeGarmo has been very successful and not of any fault of his, but I mean, it's just creating a problem that's just become unmanageable, I think, and anybody that kind of goes down there on the weekends or, you know, busy, this even isn't supposed to be a busy time, but this is a non-busy time, and, and we have folks just kind of not doing what's necessary to keep the public safe. There was, you know, toddlers running around in, in the, in the parking lot, I saw it with my eyes. So I mean, I, I think we have to realize that that, this is a problem. I think the only real solution is to queue the line towards the, the t-shirt shop. I know that's not ideal, I know that's not what the applicant is wanting, but I think we have to just, you know, be, be big brother here and say, you know, we have to do what's best for the public. So that's my opinion on, on everything else. That, that 12 inch drop off, I, I'm kind of in agreement on that. I, I think, you know, it's opening a Pandora's box as far as accessibility. Nothing's accessible down there anyway, but I mean, asking them to fix it, to, to move a tank just to fix it, just, I, I'd rather give in other areas, if we're compromising, I'd rather, I'd rather that be an area we didn't ask for something and we got something else on, on, on a flip side. I, I think the public benefit out is out, is greater in other areas than the, the tanks. I would love to see it all fixed, but if we had to, if we had to give on anything, I'd rather give there and, and get, definitely I think priority one for me would be the queue line, making that towards the t-shirt shop and, and having some very clear delineations, some very clear vehicular travel areas where, where vehicles are supposed to be, where people are supposed to be, and making sure the two don't intersect. So I think that's got to be, public safety's got to be number one there. Coastal access has to be my priority on the, on the other end. Removing that gate would be my preference, and then, you know, if we had still some, some, some equity, some trust equity left in this thing, maybe we can get that repaired by the tanks, but that's how I would approach it.
Okay, thank you Jesse. Susan?
So I have a hard time understanding, okay, I understand the concerns for public safety. What I have a hard time understanding is how you don't have those same concerns for the north end. In my mind, it's critical that, that gate be closed at night for all the safety reasons they talked about. People wandering in at night, falling off the, the docks there, people getting into the equipment, the fuel tank stuff. So in my mind, I, I absolutely feel for public safety, it's really important that that gate be closed at night. Terms of removing wood slats from it, I think chain link fences are by nature very ugly, so in some ways the wood at least makes it look better, a little more natural look to it. I think I would like to see, I would like to give Giovanni's queuing idea a chance. So what they have set up now is not what they're planning to set up. Nothing has changed yet. I'm, I'm assuming that's correct. So if they really do delineate these lines, you will have the, the bollards and the chains or whatever with the lines of people waiting for their food adjacent to the area where people are accessing the, the coastal access route. And I, you know, he's cursed by being so popular, and that's a problem a lot of businesses would like to have. So I, I'd hate to see us limit that. And I think these are strange times we're in right now, you know, in terms of children running around in parking lots and not having as many vehicles, so many people are walking down instead of driving. So I think if and when we start to open and get back to some kind of normal life, we may see some changes in all of that anyhow. I think also that in my mind, this is one of the last areas where the needs of our commercial fishing community are being addressed, and it's really important that we don't damage that. So that's another reason I, I'd like to see that, that access as a privilege for that one small area of the waterfront and for the times when the fishing community needs it for the work that they do. The only other comment I think, oh, the drop thing, I think, and I've dealt with things like this even near my business with infrastructure problems. Businesses sometimes have to come up with creative ways to make an area safer for people. So when you have a drop like that, or we have sidewalks that are uplifted, you sort of put something in that area, and I like what they did actually with using the asphalt to at least smooth that, that access around there. The only other thing I had, and it's very minor, is those signs, the Codfather signs, the, the restoration of them. I love the old weathered look of them, and, you know, maybe if you just put some polyurethane over them or something. I have the original Taco Temple sign in the garden at my shop, and we did have that repainted and restored, and it's just not the same. You know, I wish we had just hit it with some polyurethane or something ahead of time so you kept that vintage look to it. That's minor, you do what you want to do with it. So those would be my comments.
Okay, thank you Susan. Michael? I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, Michael, go ahead, and Joseph, you'll be next.
Just to follow up with Susan, I've been repurposing about. Just to follow up with Susan, I've been repurposing about 400 lineal feet of 1960s redwood that I salvaged from a few years ago. And so, you know, it's it's really interesting to see what what old pieces, what old screw holes and things like that, am I gonna retain on some of these things while I've taken off some of the aging? You know, this is a fantastic, you know, parcel. I I I love that we have a working harbor. And and I, as I mentioned last meeting, I was happy to retreat the walkway off of the wood path so that those operations have more dedicated space there. I think I think people are are pretty flexible once they're in that zone. I think walking around the tanks is is okay with me. The the key things for me are are the coastal access points and how you know when you're on the path. And the the idea of access to me is 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 really special. And as I mentioned last time, it's counterintuitive to me that for a safety thing, having wooden a fence that keeps you from seeing what's behind the fence if somebody is there, or that the fence ends up being a dead end if somebody gets chased in there. I I still think that's a that's a potential issue of liability. It's different. I'm willing to look at the the opening of the gate with the agreed upon times to see how that works with monitoring on that. So I'll I'll accept the gate with the monitoring that we'll come back and look at that at a future date. I like the striping. What I'm concerned about, though, is is, you know, I I use this facility probably more than I should for my my waistline. But the the south entrance, I I think there's something about, you know, I've noticed in the bike paths, when we have the green paint on the bike paths, people know it's the bike path. That's where you're supposed to be. When you've got the striping in the in the parking lots, people know that that's not where your car belongs. And so there's something about, and I don't have a strong opinion about this, but my sense is if we start striping where the access points are, you stripe the south access way and you don't put the ballards in the south access. And you you don't have people queuing up in the south access. And I think some some kind of differentiation besides just the ballards would be something I would encourage us to to talk about. I'm fine with the signs. I think eventually, I hope we get better signs. I'm not a graphics expert, but I'm not crazy about our coastal access signs. I think we're kind of stuck with them. But I don't have any problem with the additional square footage of signage on the project. And I do think it's important that we're concerned about the public access. You know, I I think if if Gio has an incredible weekend and he's got a queue out there, it's up to him how to figure out how to get that queue in there. It can't interrupt the public access. So I'm fine to not, I'm I'm fine to be agnostic on the on the order line as long as the harbor access is very clear. And we have it demarcated in the south and monitored in the north.
Okay, thanks, Joseph.
Yeah, I'm I'm persuaded that the area where the sheds are is is a place where all sorts of mischief could happen. And there's a need for the gate, notwithstanding that there isn't any gated area so that you can still approach the area from the south. So I, and and I also think that the the wooden aspect of the gate is probably more attractive than a cyclone fence. And so I I don't mind the wooden gate at all. But but I'm thinking that the gate should remain and at such time as the leasehold was renegotiated, there might be a discussion then about some, you know, serious redesign in terms of providing more sort of security at night for the shed area or the tank area, other ways of of preventing the mischief. But but I realize that would require certain additional expenses. And I'm not prepared to have the applicant do that at this time. With respect to the to the south and the queuing, I I I think we should see if the the new attempt at queuing works. And I I think there's a good chance that it would. And and I agree completely with Commissioner Lucas that it's really up to the applicant to do what he thinks is necessary, also to self-regulate this, to, you know, and to take an active role in in making sure that this movement, this relocation of the queuing area really, really works. And and the only other thought, with respect to the signage, you know, I I get that we need more signs because there are a whole variety of businesses there. But I was looking at the southern facade of the of the fish market. And pretty much that whole facade is covered with signs. I'm wondering, I I mean, I don't have a strong opinion on this because I've practically, over the years, I've gotten used to, you know, looking at the establishment, I have sort of a fond affection for it. But I'm wondering if we could take down one or two of the signs. Because if you, I believe it's I wrote down page, page 42 of the of the of the filing. There's, you know, a picture of the of the southern facade of the of the fish market. And there are lots of signs there. I think that's that's really all I all I have to say about it.
Okay. My comments on it are that, you know, I walked aside with them. I've, I have. Am I being, am I being broadcast? Okay, okay. All right, so I walked aside with them and we discussed several of these items. And I basically came to the, you know, it's it's a philosophical difference between should private enterprise and private business be utilizing the the public space, especially the lateral access for the public access for their private, for their their private enjoyment and their to their benefit and not the public's benefit? And so so that south access is is the two points that I have the biggest problem with are the south access and the gate. The south access, I don't believe that the ballards are going to do the trick. I think people are just gonna step over them, step around them, stand in the way and lean up against the railing and wait for their, wait for their orders to come out there. It's, you know, I saw that today, even though it was, there were three or four different people there. Two of them were standing over in the middle of the public access, waiting for that, waiting for their orders. So I don't think it's gonna work. Saying that, due to the extraordinary situation we're in, I'm willing to let them give that a chance and and see if they can make it work. But I think it needs to be reviewed at the six month and and the one and the one year anniversary on this also to see that it continues to work. But I don't, you know, with this and the north gate, I don't think it's the city's responsibility to make sure that that a private business that stated that they were not gonna do this, that we have to monitor them to to be in compliance with what they propose to do. And so I think it's up to the applicant and up to them to make sure that this is gonna work out and not and not be put back onto the city to be to be the, you know, the the gate, quote unquote, the gatekeeper on this. They need to be, they need to make sure that they're in compliance with what their their CUPM, what what their plan stated that they were gonna do. And they should not block the the public access, the lateral access to the bay. That is our most important, one of our most important assets that we have for the community. The entire community utilizes this. And it's the attraction, you know, it's one of the attractions why that business is so good. Not the only, not the only reason, but one of them. And so he needs to protect that. And he, you know, they need to to make sure that that stays, you know, stays free and clear. And that's up to him and not to this, not up to the city. So I'm willing to go along with a three month and then probably maybe a six month and maybe a year review on this to see that it is continual and that it that it does work out. As far as the gate goes on the on the north end, the coast, you know, I've written on one of the plans and in the condition of the coastal commission originally, they required the removal of that gate. We do not have, we do not have any gates. We required the removal of gates throughout the lateral access or a couple of the projects that we required the removal of the gates on, where they had gated and they had blocked it off. I'm willing, once again, to let them go with the three months to see how it works out. But everybody that is running, that is, that has a commercial enterprise in this whole town has problems with vandals, has problems with people coming onto their property. I am nowhere near, you know, my my commercial property is nowhere near as attractive as an attractive nuisance as this. And I still have people, you know, several times, you know, several times a month, I'll have people having gone onto the property at night, you know, to to see what they could do, you know, theft, all of that. This, this happens, and it's one of the one of the issues of having a commercial property. And it's one of the issues you need to take care of. And so I think there is ways that that he can fence off his private and the important areas rather than fencing off the lateral access for the community. But once again, I will, you know, I will go and because of this, the situations we're in, you know, I will, I will allow them to do a three month, a three months trial and then review it probably six month and then one year again to see if it is working. I don't think it will, but I will. You know, I will allow, you know, I will, I'll get behind that at this point. As far as the signage, so let's talk about the pathway. I'm torn on this because I don't know how we can approve a project that is NADA compliant and how we can allow something that's not ADA compliant. But once again, and then, you know, the tanks were set there so that the pathway has to go around the tanks. I think it could have been better thought out on the front, the front end where this wouldn't have, this conundrum wouldn't have happened. I think that the 12-inch drop can be handled by, you know, by a curb along the wharf wharf area to keep, keep traffic and keep keep porkless from going over it. And then there's also on all of the wharfage in the the waterfront area does not have, does not have fencing between the edge of the wharf and the bay. We would have to do that on every dock and every every street end if that was a requirement we were going in. So I don't believe that's gonna, you know, I don't believe that's a valid argument. Once again, I will allow them to come through with their solution to see if it works. If it doesn't work, then at the three months, six month and one year review, we can then, we can then take a look at it and require it to be done what I would, what I would assume would be the the correct way. As far as the signage, I think Susan had a good idea on that. I kind of like the the funky cod codfather signs and stuff. They're just, they they get a little bit of that unique, the unique character. I'll let them handle that the way they want. It's, it's tough to create a patina. So, you know, I give them, only time does that. I I think there's a lot of extra signs there, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pick nits on this. Okay, Jesse, you raised your hand on this?
Yeah, if I can, it sounds like I'm in the minority on this and maybe that's.
Let me, I actually agree with you, Jesse, but I think.
Well, I was gonna say, if we're gonna do the three month trial and and we need, we really need to identify and establish some kind of benchmarks that way we can evaluate how the how it's how it's going and and what we're expecting to happen if certain benchmarks aren't achieved and if certain benchmarks are achieved, you know. So we really need to have some sort of enforcement ability for Scott to 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 go in there and say, you have to do this, you didn't do this, or you need to do this.
Well, I think it needs to come back before us. You know, that I don't see, I don't want to put it back on Scott. I think it needs to be reviewed by the planning commission.
So what would you, what would you think appropriate benchmarks would be? I mean, what, how would we evaluate their their performance? I mean, I don't know if that's the right word, but.
That's a very good question. You know, the south gate needs to be logged when it's open, when it's closed. You know, I I mean, the north gate, the south end, you know, there needs, you know, there needs to be people going down there. And it needs to, the the the, the traffic needs to be controlled by, you know, by the applicant and not by the city. I, you know, personally, I think that the either the 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 window needs to be moved so it's on their property and the queue is on their property. And that's where it should have been in the first place. You know, he, they created the, they created this nuisance by the design of the design of their restaurant. It's not the city's problem. You know, it is their problem. They're using a public resource for their private gain by pushing, pushing the queue out into the public parking lot instead of having it on their property, which we would require anybody else to do, you know.
I know, I know this is not gonna be a popular thing for the applicant, but just food for thought, you know, in evaluating these 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 concerns we have, it occurred to me that the only real way to do this would be to have some sort of camera focused on on the harbor, on the south entrance and on the on the the gate area. We could see what time it opens, we could see what time it closes, we could see how often we're we're getting impeded traffic through that area. I mean, if there's another way, I don't know of it.
I think that's a great idea. And I, in in my discussion with them as we walked the property, they said they were already doing that or would or would be doing it. Another camera on the the queue for the parking lot, I think, would be would be valid. So who else would like to chime in on that?
Is is anybody have, I mean, my concern about things like cameras are, how do you measure? You know, again, the graphic on the ground, I think, gives you a very precise thing that says, hey, the baller's in the walkway. You know, and and I think if you if you don't demarcate it, it gets abused. You know, and I I think the the demarcation of the public space to me could help. I I think the idea of a camera is fine, but I I think it's it's much easier to drive past and say, hey, the ballers are in the wrong place. Easy discussion point.
And I think that I think that would be part of the, I, you know, I go along with your your point. I I agree with the markings. Right now, there's markings on there that basically delineate as as, you know, as line, you know, as part of the queue for the the restaurant. And with those, with those lateral, with those, you know, I would, you know, perpendicular markings there marking off the spaces, you know, it's showing that, you know, people don't go here. And so we need, so I don't have a problem with the with the signage on the ground. But once again, it's gonna be, you know, I'm thinking it's, it's going to be, you know, everybody's gonna want to lean up against the the railing to look at the otters, you know. They're not gonna want to be five feet away, which we actually should be required an eight-foot lateral access, not a four-foot lateral access like there is. We should be required, you know, we should be requiring an eight-foot lateral access all the way through that property. So at the bare minimum, I'm with you on the marking and I'm with Jesse on the cameras.
I understood the the ballers to be fixed. Am I, am I missing that?
They added one, I think they're proposing to add, to add one or two more along that the transition between the asphalt. the transition between the asphalt and the, and the cement walkway there to delineate that space. So.
You could certainly, you could certainly ask the applicant. It looks like Kathy has something she might want to add to the conversation if you want to let her do that.
Okay. Kathy, would you like to add something or clarify?
Sure, maybe I can help out just a little bit. So a couple of things, one, on the, the camera, there is a camera on the gate side. So if somebody says on, you know, May 22nd at two o'clock in the afternoon, the gate was closed, Geo's got a camera so he can go back and take a look and, and do that. And he has offered to keep a log so that if the gate is closed for commercial fishing activities, or let's say that there's some repair work he needs to do down there and has to close the gate during the daytime, he's gonna log that so we'll be able to tell you exactly what was going on. The ballards, yes, the, we're gonna put ballards and we're moving them over so that the idea is to get people to funnel in this line with the ballards and the chains so that we can keep people out of the access way. There's always gonna be public that will stop there naturally and look, even if they don't have somebody in the takeout line. So we just have to be a little concerned that, you know, we're trying to monitor the public the best we can and especially if they're in a line, that's, that's fair, but if they're just wanting to buy and stop, we're, we're not to blame on that one. And the other thing I want to bring up is on, well, we're supportive of coming back to the planning commission for review. I have a little concern about the three months, only because right now in the position that we're in with this pandemic and the social distancing we're having, I think that some of the situations are getting exacerbated here because typically you wouldn't have people six feet apart in the takeout line. So now we're trying to spread the public apart from each other. So it's actually making it a little bit more difficult when they go up to the line just because we are trying to get them to practice the social distancing. If, if in three months, if we're still going on and we're still practicing social distancing and we're, and we're having people milling around in the park, in the parking lot, which again may be, you know, part of people going to the takeout window, or maybe it's just the local fishermen are standing in their parking lot and talking to each other, whatever. But I think that the three month mark is maybe a little too quick until we get over this pandemic that we're in right now and in the, in our orders that we have and the social distancing changes, I think it's a little difficult and a little unfair to try to put a benchmark on Giovanni when we've got things that are completely out of his control and we're, the situation's different. So if we, you know, if the orders get lifted and we get it back to normalcy in three months, then I think then giving a chance of a normal time for a three month period for a review would be fair, which actually would probably put us about six months from now rather than three months from now. So if you don't mind just taking that into consideration right now, you know, three months may be a little premature just because of the, the situation that we're in.
Okay, thanks Kathy. That's a valid point, you know. So I'm, I'm sorry, I keep asking this, but my video's not changing over, so I don't know if I'm coming through.
You are.
Okay. Great. Okay, so what we've got here is, let's see where people stand on this. We're, as far as what I see as consensus item, you know, the signage, let's go with the easy one first, let's go with the signage too. I think we have, you know, we, we have agreement that the signage will be okay and that they, that they can, can treat that, the unique signage as they see fit on that to make it look as good as, you know, as reasonable with, but be, be able to keep the funkiness about it. Do we, do I have, do I have head nods on all that? Okay, okay, I think we got agreement on that. Okay, on far as the pathway, so I'm going from the easiest to the hardest here. So as far as the pathway, I'm willing to, you know, I'm willing to let them, you know, because of the conditions mostly, I'm willing to let them try their solution and see how it, see how it works. Do I have agreement on that and head nods? Okay.
I, I thought though, when you say the pathway, you mean the, the queuing in front of the, the takeout window?
No, I'm, I'm talking about the pathway through the property, you know, around the tanks and the ADA issue with the, with the pathway, also the fact that it's five feet instead of the required eight foot. So, okay, so we have, we have pretty much unanimous agreement on those two items, the way I'm reading it. Okay, the, so let's talk about the beach street gate, the north, north gate. As far as the time it's open and logging, keeping a log on, on, on when it's closed and we, you know, having a camera set on it. You know, my position is, I'm not for that, I think it should be removed, but I'm willing to let them see, let them give that a try and let's see, let's see if they can comply. Where do, Jesse, where do you stand on this?
If I can add a couple more comments to that, as opposed to, to what? Because I mean, I, I think there's been a, a rather clear demonstration that it hasn't worked and I just don't know how much more time is going to fix that.
I agree with you, until this came up to us, it hadn't worked. And I was, but, you know, once again, I'm, I'm, I'm deferring more to the situation we're in right now. And, and rather than put another hardship, you know, on them, let's, let's see what they can do. Lately, they've been, they, you know, he, they've been compliant and they've been good at keeping it open.
If I can be frank, I, I'm tempted to vote no on the whole thing because of this. I'm willing, I'm, I'm, I feel that strongly about it. However, I understand where you're coming from and I also don't want to, you know, impose more hardships on Mr. DeGerrymore at this time. I, I would like in the future to be able to, at the six month mark, even if, even if they're opening it, when they said they're supposed to be opening it, I still think I may want to reserve the right to change my mind later.
Oh, I, I, I'm not convinced that the gate should stay, but, you know, so I, I, you know, it's a firm, you know, I, I, I'm not convinced the gate should stay, but I'm willing to give them a try at this point and we can check back on the review. Okay, Michael, where do you sit on this?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I share, you're in Jesse's opinion. I'm, I'm basically anti-gate, but I, I know in speaking with them at the site and, and hearing Kathy speak tonight and, and what's in the, in the staff report, I'm, I'm willing to, to give it another shot as well. But I think if we were designing this from scratch, that gate wouldn't be there. And I think we need to, to have that in the record that it's only under kind of extreme conditions here of economic turmoil and, you know, some other, other conditions we're still figuring out how to, how to live with, that I, I think we should see how it works.
Okay, Joseph?
Well, as to Jesse's question as why it would be different this time, I, I think it's pretty clear that the applicant has a lot more incentive to observe what the, what the law is, because there's no doubt that the commission is really serious about perhaps removing the gate if the, the letter isn't observed. So I, I, I think there's a good chance that we'll see, you know, a more accurate observation of what he should do.
Okay, and then Susan, I think I know your, your position on this, but I want you to reiterate.
Yeah, I feel like as long as we consider ourselves a commercial fishing community, we need to have the gate. And if we decide we don't need our commercial fishermen anymore and they don't need to have the ability to do their industry in a safe manner, then okay, take all the gates away. But I, I, I really feel this is important for the commercial fishing people.
I'll just comment, there's, there's no gates down at the, you know, the landing behind, you know, behind Tagazini's, there's no gates, you know, at the commercial landing, you know, in, you know, over there, you know, by the Dutchman. So there's, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll take issue with you on that, but.
Is there a fuel dock there? They don't have the fuel there, do they?
No, they don't have the fuel there, but they do, but they still have all the commercial.
Do they have the, the forklifts?
Landing, they have the forklifts, they have, they have the fish, you know, the, the fish boxes, the ice makers, they have.
A different structure over there, but, you know, I'm not a fisher person, I don't.
Okay, so we'll, I think we're in agreement at least on, on the six month on that. So for the gate, for right now, we'll see how that goes. So we had the south access, the pathway, the beach street gate, the signage. So Scott, do we need anything, do we need a condition to, to set up that they, that we need to have them come back on a six month review on this?
I believe that Cindy can verify this, but there's already a condition out there that they come back in six months. I think we do have to alter, if you guys are fine with the signage, we do have to alter the sign conditions, Cindy, is that correct?
Yeah, so you should decide if you want to remove planning condition number one, which would require restoration of the Godfather signs. And condition three is the gate closure condition, which would require them to maintain a record of gate closures for six months and then come back to the planning commission in six months.
We, we could certainly add in the review, you know, of the, of the, of the queuing line and to that as well for you.
Right, right. Okay, so do I have a, Joseph?
Well, could, could we return just a moment to, to Jesse's point about how, how the queuing line is gonna work? What I'm gonna, I, I can foresee if we come back in, in six months, that there's gonna be some anecdotal evidence that it didn't work and then there's gonna be anecdotal evidence that at times it did. And, you know, at that point, I, I'd like to sort of avoid, you know, he said, she said, I mean, could we, could we talk a little bit more about how we're gonna decide this six months from now as to whether it's working or not? Because I, I think that's really key.
Do what, what parameters are, would you, would you want to see? Do we have a camera?
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, I would think, you know, random photographs of the site, including, well, or, or random sort of, random photographs of the site at what are peak business, business hours would probably do the trick, but I'm not sure, you know, I, I don't want to put an additional burden on the community development office. I'm not sure if we as the commissioners should be the ones, or one of the should be out there taking the pictures.
Well, I think if we have a security camera, they should be able to, to do a six month log on that with, you know, with days picked out, you know, on their review, their review period. We could pick out, you know, 12, one o'clock and two o'clock, you know, for single, single photographs off a security camera from, you know, one or two days, you know, on the weekends on the, out of a month or something.
Okay, yeah.
You know, I think that's, that would be, I think that would be acceptable and I think that would give verification for, you know, one argument or the other.
What, what are we, I have a challenge with what we're asking the applicant to do because again, if he has this massive line of people, is he supposed to say, I'm sorry, we cut off here, we can only take 30 people in line and the rest of you have to go eat somewhere? I mean, what do you?
No, we, we just ask him to keep, we ask him to keep the lateral access open and clear. So the people that are walking up and down the, the bayfront can pass without having to, to shoulder their way through six, seven people.
But what if like was mentioned, sometimes people just stop and look at the otters there? I mean, people stop and lean over the fence all the time and they're not having any, I do it. They're, I'm not there for the food necessarily at all, but as I take my walks along there, I stop and look. So how, how do you measure that with pictures or even with a video?
Well, then they have a queue the other way.
That's kind of my whole point the whole time.
What, what'd you say, Jesse? I'm sorry.
That was kind of my point the whole time is that a queue only really works towards the T-shirt shop. If we're, if we're trying to evaluate whether Mr. DeGerrymore's line is affecting public access, it's gonna be basically, I mean, it could be probably look, the same people could look at the same video of the same one hour Saturday afternoon and make different determinations of who's sitting on the railing and who's, is it Mr. DeGerrymore's customers? Is it, is it public? Is it, I mean, it.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I agree with you, Jesse, but I'm willing to go the benefit of the doubt at this point, you know, to give them, to give them the opportunity to try it their way, but I don't believe it's gonna work. I think, you know, like I stated, I believe that it's going, there are people are gonna, you know, just jump the, jump the ballards or just gonna walk around them and stand over there and it's gonna block the public access. So I think that he, you know, that's gonna be a management issue that he's gonna have to take care of, that he's gonna have to, for the remainder of the time he's doing business there, however many years that's gonna be, that's gonna be a management issue with him. If, if he could, you know, if he wants to come up with a structural issue that will solve that, that he doesn't have to deal with it on a, on an ongoing basis, that's gonna be up to him. But the public access has to remain free and clear so people can walk through there.
To me, to me, the, the public access is not any different than, we have some narrow sidewalks with telephone poles, light things, things like that. Someone stops in front of a, a window to look at a display or something like that. We have a constriction, you know, so there's all those opportunities. The thing to me is that we've got an extremely successful takeout business that routinely is gonna have this queue. The queue can't be in the public space. I'm not gonna worry that somebody has to squeeze a bit to get around, you know, social distancing to go past somebody watching the otters. I'm concerned that the queue for the takeout is in, is against the rail. And the ballards show that that's effective. I think that's a good faith effort. And if on a big weekend where we've got, you know, tons of people down at the harbor, hopefully again someday, we'll worry about how effective this method is. But I'm, I, I just wanna go on the record saying I'm not, it, it's, it's not like we have to have a five foot open corridor for fire access or something like that. It's, it's really just don't put the queue in the public space. That's my biggest.
And, and I guess my, 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 my only response to that is, and that's fine. I mean, if, if that's what we end up with and that's what the commission decides, I, I mean, I'll go along with it and I'll, and I'll smile and I'll, and I'll go on with life. I'm just saying, if we're gonna review this in six months, if we don't have concrete benchmarks that we're evaluating against, what are we evaluating?
Chair Lord, do you mind if I weigh in?
Sure.
I, I, I think you all know what it looks like when it doesn't work, right? Cause it doesn't work now. I mean, well, up and it didn't work up until the point where he started managing it a little bit better, but I mean, it's been a problem in the past. You know what it looks like when it's like that. If it looks like that in six months, I think you have your answer. I don't think you need metrics for any of that. I think if it's still doing the same thing and you can't walk by there and sometimes when I've gone by that location, there's just a mob of people in and around the line, right? That's the thing that we need to stop having happen, right? So I think we'll all see that. I don't, I mean, I go down there five days a week when I'm in, when I'm in town. So I mean, like I, I would see it frequently and I'm sure all of you go by it frequently as well. So I don't know that the metric thing is as much of an issue because I think you know what it, you want it to be and I think you know what you don't want it to be. And I think there'll be consensus once, you know, six months from now when we pick this back up again.
Okay, Joseph?
I, I just want to say, the situation currently, or up until very recently, has been egregious. So what we're really trying to do is not achieve perfection here, but just to avoid an egregious situation. So again, that addresses people who are not ordering food and only looking at the otters. Or even if there's occasionally, you know, some infractions, some invasion of the board route, we're, we're just trying to eliminate a situation which really isn't tolerable right now.
Agreed, agreed. Okay, so then I think we're gonna need, are we in agreement that we will give this six months, you know, a six month trial and we review it in six months and recommend to the applicant that best option is if they, you know, put a security camera out there that they can, you know, show, show videos, you know, that would be the best way that they could, could quantify this and, and we'll know, and like Scott said, we'll know. And, and we'll know, and like Scott said, we'll know if it's not working. So then the other thing is we'll need to, to amend the conditions on the sign to allow the unique and character of the patina on those existing signs to, to remain. Okay, so, so do we have a motion?
Excuse me, Chair Lord?
Okay, yes, thanks.
Do you want to modify the sign condition or do you want to just delete it entirely? With, with just a, just a verbal comment that, you know, restore the signs in a manner that, you know, that keeps the eclectic nature, but allow them to do with it what they want, whether that's polyurethane or, or, or just, you know, the point being is that not adding the condition.
Right, I'm, I'm comfortable with not adding the condition. Do I, what is the, the rest of the commission?
I agree.
Agreed. Okay, it looks like we have an agreement on that. Thanks, thanks, Cindy. So we'll eliminate the condition I think was planning, condition three? Is that?
Actually, no, condition one, condition.
Condition one, okay.
That's the, that's the gate condition.
Okay, I can't go back and forth on my electronics that fast, so.
Yeah, all good.
Okay, okay, great. So do we have a motion? Does someone want to attempt a motion on this? Michael, you're up.
I'm looking for the, the proper place here. So it's, it's under the recommendation, Cindy? Is that it? I, I reckon.
Page one of the staff report.
I can, do we conditionally approve the project resolution 10 dash 20, which includes findings and conditions of approval for the CUP MIN 20 dash 003 depicted on the site plan dated April 14th, 2020? And further amending it to drop clause ones, clauses one and three?
Only condition one, not three.
Condition one.
Unless you want to keep, unless you want to eliminate the gate condition.
I think we want to keep them. Okay.
And so clarification on that, Cindy, this, that allows for a review by the planning commission on this in six months? Or approximately?
Yes, it says within six months or no later than January 2021, just to, just for allowance over the year end holidays.
Okay, great.
Do we want, do we want to add the review of not just the gate? Because it reads the gate, doesn't it, Cindy?
The gate. So do you want to add the queuing of the south area?
Yes.
And then also I think we need to have the, the pathway to see how that's working out.
Okay.
And does that include things like any, what's the official, what's the official complaint to the staff? Do, do you file complaints when they come in about people who are concerned about the conditions? Do we have a way of notating those things?
If we received complaints about any of those items?
Yeah.
Yeah, certainly we'll keep track of those over the next six months.
All right. Okay.
Okay, so I think we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, I think we, I think we're ready. Cindy, did you want to call, call the question?
Sure, Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart.
Aye.
Commissioner Barone.
Aye.
Commissioner Gracia.
Aye.
Chairperson Lord.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And thank you, Kathy and Jill.
Thank you, Commission.
Okay, great. Okay. Okay, that was our only item for public hearings. We have, next item is new business and we have none. Unfinished business, we're having, we have none that we're going to talk about. I'm sure we've got a bunch. Planning commissioner comments and future agenda items. Joseph?
You know, I, I had a thought. From time to time, you know, we're talking about the Embarcadero and, and having it be a one-way street or perhaps even closing it off to traffic at times. You know, now I'm thinking in terms of this pandemic and the restaurateurs and the need for more space in the restaurants. And I wonder if we ought to think about the notion of turning some portion of the Embarcadero into restaurant table space. Not permanently, but maybe just in some fashion to help out the various restaurants. Just a thought.
I just heard today that Paris is going to be closing, closing off lanes on their, of streets and allowing the cafes to put tables out in the streets gate.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so, you know, it's.
It's actually something we're looking at.
Oh, okay.
Even parking areas, because when the orders come out, allow, you know, like restaurants to fully reopen, a lot of them, you know, will have more parking than they'll need because they're going to only have 50% of the seating in it likely. So we're looking at all of those things. You know, we're partnered with the chamber, talking to Erica about it quite a bit. And as soon as we get clarity from where we're going, we'll have a little better idea about what we're doing. We have kind of the, the generalized game plans in place, but the county has to put some of the specifics in it because the, the governor's order when it comes through is probably just going to be mostly what we're doing now. But there is the ability for some of the, you know, the counties and the state that are doing well, meaning they don't have a lot of cases like San Luis, to have more things open. You just have to submit the application to the, to the state and then they'll approve it and they agree with it. So we're working on things like that. So, so we are, we're looking at some of those options.
I know that there's no comments or things like that, but I mean, the, the place I always think of, I love to take my students up to a place called Beldon Lane up in San Francisco, which is a narrow alleyway between some of the mid-rise structures and all the restaurants spill out into the street there. It's one of my delightful places. The idea of dining outside here is we have, we're, we're so gifted with an incredible climate to do that. I, I would think that would be a great thing to have the business community. See if they can get some, you know, consolidation on that thinking.
Yeah, that would be great.
A good time to consider shutting down the Embarcadero between Pacific, between Pacific and Harbor like we talked about years ago.
Yeah, okay. I just, I had an item I wanted to bring up also, just to, to see. I know we have no money to do anything particularly, but we, we do have the housing element. So I'd like people to kind of think about this. The basis of this too is that there's, you know, there's been a homeless issue here. I had, I had direct, you know, face to face, you know, you know, action with that or basically, you know, when they shut, when they moved the homeless out of the creek next to the high school, they moved up to the state park and the creek up there. And so there was a steady traffic by my commercial property. And so they were interacting with my property quite a bit there, security problems and all that. Also, just on the Dog Beach, there was a, you know, there was an encampment there that, that had kind of grown up over the last several weeks and was just, you know, was just moved out. Is there, what I would like to see is I would like to see us maybe do some different thinking on this and see if there's some partial parcels of property that the city has even has under lease such as storage, you know, the storage area for the RVs and the boats over by lycra, by the park, park area there at the end of 41. Maybe we could create a, a parking lot area that would be, would give a little bit better conditions for some, for some of these people. And I know this would be just a massive headache, but it seems like this may be the time that every, every community should be doing something, you know. It seems ridiculous that a homeless, that a homeless shelter costs close to $750,000 per bed, you know, but maybe if we could find a parking lot and some porta potties when this, the whole crisis is over and create a, create a location that would be somewhat, you know, somewhat better managed than, than having people sleep in the creeks or sleep on the, you know, have their, their, their RVs and campers parked on different side streets every, you know, throughout the, throughout the city, that, that maybe it would be worthwhile and would help solve some of, some of the homeless problem without creating a, you know, an attractive nuisance. Does anybody else have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I very much agree with that. I mean, you know, vagrancy can only be against the law when there's a viable place for homeless people to go. And as long as they don't, you certainly can't punish them for not having a home.
Yeah. Anybody else want to chime in on this or keep their hands clean?
I mean, I just, I just know, I mean, it's, it's a great thought. I mean, of course, everybody would, would love to be able to solve the homeless problem, be next to the cure for cancer and, and, you know.
Yeah.
Lotted, but I mean, I, I, I mean, I'm willing to, to entertain and as, as part of the commission, any, you know, thoughtful, thoughtful exercise in that, in that direction. I just, if, if we have one, I'm, I'm, I'm all ears.
Okay, Scott, let me ask you, let me ask you this. Are there grants available to, to do something like that, to do a, a parking lot with semi-supervision or?
I mean, I mean, some funding over time does become available for things like this. You know, although what's out there right now is not something I've been looking at, you know, more recently. But yeah, there are, you know, funding sources out there for things like that. You know, as a part of the whole response to COVID-19, you know, we created a pretty big issue for some of the homeless folks, right? In that, you know, all the gyms closed down. A lot of them, you know, had memberships in gyms, like the showers and things like that. And then that was cut off from them, you know, which is pretty tough. And so, you know, the county had to take that under advisement and create, you know, scenarios where they could go. There are a couple of locations, I believe, that were the, were ones that are, you know, have vehicles and things to go and, and park and they think of shower facilities for them and things like that. There's a, you know, there's, there's different solutions that are out there. I think they, you know, that was in addition to coming up with places in, you know, where they might be able to be housed if, you know, they became ill and those types of things.
Right, yeah, I was going to say, I think this is a, a great thing. I, I think it's one of those things, though, it's not going to succeed on the, with the city as the only entity. I, I think a lot of the, I know, I know the faith community we're part of in Los Osos has a, has a tremendous buy-in to what's going on in some of the efforts over there. And I, I would imagine there are other collaborators here that would be good to survey to see if anything is already being done or there's some, some interest in moving things more forward. I think the, the, the thing the city would want to do is to, to try to see if there's a way that the process, when something like this gets agendized, what, what are the issues that, that we actually have some control over? Which would be some of those temporary use kind of things that we're talking about. So I think it's a, it's, it's almost impossible for me to understand how the city can shoulder the problem without having an awful lot of community support and other collaborators.
Yeah, I agree.
I think, you know, the idea about, you know, you, you, you mentioned the housing element, you know, you have the draft and then hopefully you're starting to look at it because I'm going to bring it in front of you soon. But that is, you know, someplace where, you know, policies could be put in there for, you know, to have the city, you know, potentially go look at things like that. That's, there's an implementation section in it, you know, that tells us all the things we're going to go do. Certainly, you know, something along those lines wouldn't be, you know, out of the realm.
You know, one of the, kind of, and this is scary thought, but, you know, one of the issues is we have, you know, driving around, I see all these church parking lots and they're, they're empty six and a half days out of the, out of the week. You know, so, you know, maybe partnering with them and giving them the temporary, you know, zoning clearance that they, that something maybe could even be set up in some of these parking lots that are underused, you know, most of the week.
I think especially timely because we, we just have no idea what's going to be happening in the larger macroeconomic picture. I mean, we, we've already seen what happens to our own city's finances here with, with two or three months of damage and, and we're liable to have a, a significant increase in, in the needs to address these issues that go well beyond what we've had before. And it would be great to maybe be ahead of the curve if, if there is any way to be ahead of the curve on something like this before, you know, we, we have a much more obvious problem than we have now.
Anybody else like to speak to this or any other item? Okay, Jesse?
I have another item if we're done talking about that one. I just wanted to kind of say my piece about the city's finances. I think we all have to be realistic as a community of the, the impacts that are going to, that have occurred and are going to continue to occur for the next foreseeable future and, you know, make some hard decisions. And we're all going to have to temper our expectations on what the city can provide and is going to be able to provide. And just get to pull together and do, everybody do their part. You know, I just wanted to say that.
Right, right. Right, the other, one other thing I wanted to bring up too, Scott, if, that's kind of maybe a question for you too, is that over this last weekend, I've just been noticing that we've had a lot of houses filled, you know, some of them are Airbnbs or I know that they're, they're not, you know, I, I've seen new cars and bunches of new cars in some of these houses that sit vacant during the week. Where are we with the tracking, you know, all the illegal Airbnbs and picking up TOT from them or?
So, so for the illegal ones, we, we have a contract with host compliance. They monitor all of our vacation rentals in town, both legal and illegal. And through them, we send out notifications and, and, and things like that to stop them from doing that. We're getting ready, I think, here to issue some citations for some of them. It's not something, been spending a lot of our time mostly on, as it relates to code enforcement on, you know, issues more related to COVID-19. But this is one that's been sort of lingering out there that we needed to circle back around on. And I was talking to the code enforcement officer about it last week and going through what the citation process would be. And so we're, we're, we're going to be doing some of that coming up here pretty quick. So yeah, we're also, you know, we get complaints, you know, also in relation, in relation to COVID-19 for, you know, vacation rentals that are operating legally. People coming in, we have a lot of, you're all aware of this, we have a lot of second homes in town. You know, over 20% of the existing housing stock are second homes. And so you get those folks coming into town too. So I would say about, you know, half of the complaints we get related to, it's an Airbnb, it's not an Airbnb, it's somebody, you know, that has a second home here, is coming here or their family's coming here. You know, if they're not, that's a violation of the order in case anybody wonders. You know, the, the order is shelter at home, not shelter in moral bay. You don't live here. So those are technically violations. You know, the process the police department has taken and, and we have taken in community development is education and, and warnings. And then last, you know, sort of option is to issue a $1,000 fine. I mean, we can do those things. We have issued some warning letters and the next time we have to talk to those folks, potentially beginning a $1,000 fine, they're not going to heed, you know, the direction. I'm not assuming things don't, you know, change here in the, in the near term. So we are actively monitoring those things. There is a, there's a county, you know, call line that some things come in, you know, complaints come in through as well, as well as through PD, as well as through my department.
Okay, great. Thanks, thanks, Scott. Yeah, I just noticed a giant uptick on multiple cars parked in driveways where there usually isn't any car at all. So I, you know, I was assuming too that it was, you know, was not the best situation for, for a shelter at home, you know, shelter at home situation in the COVID-19. So we have multiple families coming together and staying here for a weekend. It's, you know, doesn't seem to bend the curve like we would want it to. But, okay, anybody, anybody else have anything to say on? Okay, then Scott, do you have any comments?
I don't really have anything else. We, I, I think I mentioned before, we're actively working on what it is to open our businesses back up. You know, I had two conversations today, you know, with our EOC team and, and with the chamber, talking about where we're going to go next. Talking about putting the parameters together and handouts for our businesses so they know what they're supposed to do. It's about education, you know, we don't, you know, and, and giving them the, the tools they need. don't, you know, and, and giving them the, the tools they need to, to be successful. Chamber's conducting outreach to our business community right now, different sectors like restaurants, retail, service, commercial folks, that type of thing and having meetings with, with the different sectors or offering them up Zoom meetings to, to give them educational information because I think things are going to be changing and the orders are going to be changing both at the state level and the county. So we want to be prepared. We are actively partnered with the county and working with them through this. So we're all messaging the same thing and we're enforcing the same things and trying to get that information out to our community. So that's what we're doing right now. It's what I'll be doing, you know, through this, you know, the next five to six, seven days. Hopefully, you know, we might get some direction and ability to open some things up starting next week, maybe middle of the week, something like that. So that's what we're working towards. Other than that, you have on your next planning commission meeting, agenda is the Haslow Affordable Housing Projects coming forward, coming back to you, I guess I should say. You saw it on concept review previously. So something to look forward to.
All right. Thanks, Scott. I just want to wish, you know, wish everybody to, you know, stay safe. And we'll adjourn this meeting to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting on May 19th, 2020 at 6:00 PM through another one of these wonderful tower conferences. So, good night all.
Night, everybody.
Good one, folks.